Reverend Raymond England, pastor of Trinity Light House Church.
May we pray. Praise be to the God and the Father of the Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of compassion, the God of all comfort, who comforts us in all of our troubles. First of all, Father, we lift up the families of the scores of victims that have lost their lives this, over this weekend. Father God, we ask you to comfort them. We pray that they may, that we may be instruments of your peace and stability in troubled times. I pray that we would be united and reminded that truly we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. And we pray for the city of Dennison. Thank you for your blessings that we have received. I pray for that continued blessings and protection to be upon all those who serve the city. Thank you for wisdom for those that serve on the city council. And in the name, in your son's name, we give you praise. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we have with us the Dennison Dolphin Swim Team, who will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance. Welcome. All right, anytime you're ready.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 3A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a resolution in support of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation, 2019 Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program to assist with funding for Phase Two of the Katy Trail Project. Ms. Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to present to you an overview of the Katy Trail Phase Two project. In 2015, we purchased the abandoned railroad right-of-way for, with the vision of one day turning it into a multi-use trail that would connect downtown Dennison to downtown Sherman. In 2017, we were awarded funding through the Texas Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program to begin Phase One of the Katy Trail Project. The design has been completed and construction bids are scheduled for opening September 5th. Phase One of the trail will be approximately one mile, running from Day Street to Loy Lake Road. This will connect with Waterloo Park, one of our most well-known parks in the area. The trail will be a continuous 12-foot wide concrete trail with respite areas that contain benches, water fountains, and bike racks. Since this is an abandoned railroad, it will be set in a nature setting with wooded areas on both sides of the trail. As the trail moves south to cross Loy Lake Road, it will connect with Waterloo Park, which has several miles of unimproved trail through natural terrain, a dog park, a paved walking trail, horseshoe pits, and much more. At the crossing of Loy Lake Road, we will be constructing a 200-foot pedestrian bridge to cross Loy Lake Road. South of Loy Lake Road will be part of Phase Two and will stretch from Loy Lake Road to just south of Spur 503. Even though we have not secured funding for Phase Two of the project, we will be doing an improved surface such as crushed granite. We have coupled this trail project with a waterline project, which gives us the ability to continue the trail without it being finished with concrete. If we are awarded the funding, we will continue the 12-foot wide concrete trail throughout Phase Two. Once we have completed Phase Two, we plan to continue to the Dennison City limits at FM 691. As you can see in the regional map, it is our vision for the overall trail to reach from downtown Dennison to the southern end of Dennison, near the new multi-sport Texoma Health Foundation Park. This will be the first regional trail in Texoma for the city of Dennison and for the Sherman-Dennison MPO, and we are excited to help our area move forward with multimodal transportation and the encouragement of health and wellness. I would like to add that I have received several phone calls and emails from citizens desiring to express their support for the Katy Trail Project. I am honored to have the opportunity to help enhance our community and attract visitors to see the many amenities and natural beauty that Dennison has to offer. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and La Terra Studios is present to provide insight to any design and construction inquiries.
Questions from council members. This is a public hearing, and we have three citizens here who have asked to speak. George Mason.
Thank you, Mayor Grott, and council members. It's a real pleasure to come here and speak towards this project. I think I've spoken with some of you before about a trail in Dennison leading down to some of the parks. To me, this is a really exciting thing to see happen to our city. I live here in Dennison, and I just started bicycling about 10 years ago. When I started, it was a scary thing, going out on the road, trying to share a bicycle with the traffic on some of the highways around here. It was kind of a fearsome thing. This trail, I'm hoping, will encourage people to begin cycling in an environment that's going to be safe for them and a little easier ride than some of the ones I've been on. The, being the Katy, the Katy Trail being an old railroad right-of-way, it does not have a very steep grade to it. So even the youngest person trying to bike, or maybe the oldest person, would be able to take advantage of this. I might add that I'm 74-years-old, and I'm still cycling. So I'm looking forward to see this trail come, come to Dennison and happen. So thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Also wishing to speak is Bob Crocker. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, thank you. I represent the Texoma Parks and Trails Alliance, which is a group of hiking enthusiasts from Grayson County, and we go out to Eisenhower and Hagerman and Sherman and Dennison Parks and use all of those facilities. And so we're really interested in having places that we can go out and, and go and appreciate the nat- natural world and spend time together and enjoy those things. And so projects like this are just right up the alley of what we're looking to be able to do in this area. You know, obviously, there are health benefits to these kind of things, encouraging people to get out and be able to enjoy moving and being active and actually, you know, there's the safety benefits because we can, you know, get from place to place and, and, and I'm really looking forward to being able to do things like when you have a, instead of just going around a loop sometimes, actually be able to go out for a walk. That, that just seems good. I, I kind of have the vision for this kind of setting as what you might call a linear park. If you imagine, you know, going through some, to some botanical garden or some nature area like that, where you've got all these little trails that lead back and forth and just kind of fold up on each other, but it's all very pretty and, and shaded and all nice, well, unfold that on one, one row, and you get what, I'd like to imagine this would be like. I know that there are, you know, advantages and disadvantages, kind of things, and to be fair, to, to make that kind of trail work really nicely when you're work, sort of walking through a linear park like that, it needs to have good green space. I know that's the plan, but also there's sometimes houses and things that are a little too close to that. So I encourage you to consider, you know, how do we have, you know, some gap or some shrubs or some something, both to, you know, have the homeowners feel like there's an appropriate space there and to, you know, have the trail people feel that they are staying in a, a nature setting. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Also, we have Jim Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, my name is Jim Hall. I've been in the health and fitness business in Dennison and Sherman area for 30 years with the Nautilus Fitness Centers. And, you know, what you've done here, I 100% support. I appreciate it. I think you're on the right track. I think it's wonderful. I think it's something that's badly needed for this community, you know, and I cycle quite a bit, many different disciplines, and, and as I get older, this is one of the things that really, really appeals to me, is, is path cycling, or jogging, or walking, or whatever you want to do on it. You know, and Google, Google Maps nowadays, has a little button on there when you go to search things, you can go to maps and you can go to biking, and it shows you all these little green lines all over the places. And so hopefully, one of these, one of these days, we'll look up and Dennison will be full of green lines, and that's bike paths going all over town, connecting Eisenhower State Park to the city of Dennison. So the campers, when they come in, they could ride to downtown, get some coffee and breakfast at CJ's, visit some of our merchants on Main Street, or do whatever they're going to do. Missing, I mean, that, that's something that needs to be encouraged, that you promote and, and look forward in the future, and don't just stop with this one trail. Let's look at doing a lot of trails, okay? Also, you know, what, what the wife and I did this summer on our vacation, and this is what we do on every vacation, is we go to places that actually have a lot of bike trails, okay? And we went to Mackinac City, Mackinac Island in Michigan this year, where you could cycle completely around the entire island on a dedicated bike path, no cars, no anything. It was wonderful. Not only could you do that, you could cycle from the campground all the way into town, and then take a ferry over, and then cycle all that. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience. But this is really a growing, growing thing that you guys are just now starting to tap into. City Dennison has some advantages in the fact that you do have Eisenhower State Park right over here, and you need to connect into that. You need to seriously look at connecting to that, bring those campers into town, okay? Everybody from that area over there, Grandpappy and all that, bring them into town via a bicycle. And you'll be surprised how many people will, will utilize that traffic tool. But yeah, I 100% support the project. I look forward to it, you know, being completed, and I hope I'm not dead before the whole grand thing happens, but anyway, you've got my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. It's because of citizens like you that the Katy Trail and the trail system in Dennison is becoming a reality. So we appreciate your feedback. We appreciate you coming here and expressing your support. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir? Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Bill Edgitt, 23 Whispering Oaks in Dennison. I just want to echo the support of everyone else on this trail. I think that this is, my perspective, a little overdue, but that's okay. I think there's obstacles and, and we can wait. I just wanted to encourage you all to, as, as Mr. Hall mentioned, look at the vision, you know, of, of, of a family with their, with their toddlers on bikes or strollers, walking, hiking into downtown Dennison for, for main event items. I can picture the extension into Sherman, so people in Sherman can come and we can go there. A lot of, you know, I've lived in a lot of different, more major cities, and they, they've had these things, and, and the commerce that springs up and the property values that spring up is, is just great. So for, in Phase Two, I would encourage you, if you need volunteer, there's enough volunteers with a Dennison spirit that people would help, help you in Phase Two if that's necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment how excited I am about this trail project. You know I've been, you know, a big proponent of it since we started this conversation several years back, but I got to personally, this time last summer, experience something very similar up in St. Paul, Minnesota, and found myself on a rental bike, and 20 miles later, we had ridden up and down, almost all the way to Minneapolis from St. Paul. And, and by the way, I'm going to bring my own bike next time. That bike was about 40 pounds, I think. But it was a great experience, and, and what I found along that trail is, not only did it cater to the hikers and the bikers and the joggers and, and everybody else in between, but as, as it grew, retail started, there was ca- there was retail that catered just to those of us on the trail, and we were able to stop and have lunch and have a, have a refreshment on our path, and it was just, I was just in awe of, of that experience. And it runs up and down, so if any of you find yourself up there, it actually runs all the way down the Mississippi River. It is hundreds of miles of trail, and it's incredible. But it was a very similar model, 12-foot wide, similar to what we're looking at constructing. Obviously, this doesn't run along the Mississippi River, but we got a few creek crossings that would be pretty impressive, so. So I'm very excited.
We, we have our own amenities.
That's right, that's right.
If there's no one else to speak on behalf of this agenda item, the public hearing is closed. Questions or comments from council? A motion.
Mayor, I move, we approve the resolution in support of the grant application for the Katy Trail Phase Two project through the Texas Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And just remember, this is just the beginning. Item 3B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the code compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 321 East Chestnut and take action. Due to some administrative issues, this item will be removed from the agenda this evening and will be heard at a future date, future council agenda. Item 3C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the code compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 407 East Washington and take action. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On July 22nd, 2019, Jonathan Alexander Holbrook was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 407 East Washington. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 13-160 GHM and N of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The structure is an attractive nuisance. The structure is not weather-tight. The structure has roof damage. The structure has leaning walls from foundation failure. There has been no water service at the structure since August 11, 2016. The appraised value of the structure is $18,757 for 2019. The taxes currently owed are $972.16 and have not been paid since 2016. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the code compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal.
Questions?
Questions for Mr. Lay. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions? A motion.
Mayor.
I move to declare the structure at 407 East Washington a nuisance, unsafe, to order demolition and authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the code compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 531 West Johnson. Assess rebuilding only and take action. Mr. Lay.
Okay. On July 22nd, 2019, Vercia Coney, Greg Coney, Home Saving Association, Inner First Bank of Dennison, and Classic Exteriors were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the building at 531 West Johnson. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 13, 160E of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. Structure is a danger to collapse. There is a record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property on file in the code compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal.
Questions of Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Being none, the public hearing is closed. A motion.
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 531 West Johnson a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lay, and thank you, Ms. Bowen. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and receive direction from council on the draft of fiscal year 2020 budget. Mr. Rex.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, time to talk budget again.
It is.
First off, want to point out a couple things. One is that we've updated the Budget Quick Reference Guide. Put that at your desk tonight. That's, again, just kind of good, basic information to have about the budget if you get questions from the public or, or anyone else. There's some good, good reference material there. Also, want to thank our staff, especially in the finance department, for all the hard work that they continue to do on, on the budget process and, and the work on the budget. Really couldn't do it without them and, and our department directors that helped to form the budget. Lots of work goes into this each year, as you know. So really, five things that we want to update you on tonight. First is some personnel recommendations. We'll talk about the property tax rate and provide some information in that regards. A big component of our budget for the upcoming year is going to be street improvements, so we'll, we'll update you on that information as well, and then provide a quick overview of our, our major, two major funds, the general fund and utility fund, and where those are at. As you know, most of what we do is, is in the, we're in the people business, to deliver services to residents. We require employees to get that work done, so want to talk about some personnel recommendations we have for the budget tonight. As you know, back in June, we approved an increase for, for our fire, our civil service fire employees, which are 59 employees in total. So I've listed that here. That went effect, went effective July 1st, and was an average 20% increase. As part of our recommendations also for this budget year, we want to equalize the contribution that employees and the, the city makes on the fireman's pension program. All of our employees are on the Texas municipal retirement system except for our fire employees, and so we contribute different amounts, both the employer and the employee. We'd like to equalize that this year as part of the budget process, so that's, that's been included in the budget so far. For civil service fire, we're recommending about a 4.4% average increase that would be effective October 1st. This would really focus on all, all the ranks, but especially on sergeant, lieutenant, and assistant chief ranks, where we're further behind market. And really, the goal, goal overall this year is to approach market for all of our positions here at the city of Dennison, and make sure that we can recruit and retain employees and, and pay competitively from that perspective as well.
Excuse me, Judd.
Yes.
You said fire, you meant police, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So, yeah, for civil service police, I did say fire, right? I remember that now. Civil service police, again, 4.4 average increase to be effective October 1st. So for our non-civil service positions, which are about 181 employees, we have generated a new pay plan for those employees that we'd like to take effect on January 1st. It would be at least a 2% increase for employees. However, on some positions where we're not to market pay, where we have higher turnover, and I've listed a few of those here, those increases would, would, we propose those to be higher so we can get closer to market. Our equipment operator, one and two positions, utility worker, dispatcher, water wastewater operator, library assistant, and animal control officers. Again, those are positions we're further behind in market and would recommend that we get, get up to market with those positions. The only posi- we are not proposing to add any new positions other than one that is not funded through the general or utility fund. As you know, we're proposing to do 50 to 60 million dollars worth of water, sewer, and street projects over the next five years, and really, to be able to appropriately manage those projects and help move them forward, we would like to add a capital improvement program manager position that will be funded through the CIP dollars. Again, this will be focused solely on helping move forward our water and wastewater improvements that we've proposed in the CIP. That would, that would help us do that, manage those projects. We're making some other reclassifications and moving positions around, doing a little bit of reorganizing in some of our departments in the other funds, but no, not requesting any new positions at this time. On the property tax rate, want to spend a little bit of time talking about this. So we received our certified values from the, the Central Appraisal District late in July. We have worked with the tax office to calculate what our tax rates will be for the next year. So our current tax rate is .633377. Our effective tax rate, so the effective tax rate is, is the sa- is the rate that's needed to raise the same amount of tax revenue for the, for the current, or for the next year. So that effective tax rate is just over 61 cents. The rollback tax rate, which would deliver 8% increase in revenue, tax revenue for the following year, is .652034. We are proposing to take us up to that rollback rate, and I'll get into some of the reasons for that here in just a minute. So that rate difference is about 2.9% or about 1.8 cents on the tax rate. We, at that rate, at the, assuming the rollback rate, we would project to accumulate about a million dollars in new property tax revenue, and some of that's going to come from existing property values going up, some of that's going to come from new property that's been added to the tax rolls, so new housing, new projects, commercial and otherwise. 62% from existing and 38% from new. Keep that in mind, on the next slide, I'll talk about, again, some factors that really weigh in on us going up to the rollback rate, and the, the percent of existing property contributing to our new tax revenue really is one of those factors. So with that 1.8 cents of new, new revenue, or that's going to, that's going to create additional revenue of $275,000, and I'll, I'll point to that one here in just a minute as well. So why go to the rollback rate? As you'll recall, this past legislative session, Senate Bill 2 passed, which limits revenue growth on existing property to 3.5%. Currently, that number's 8%. Dennison relies heavily on the growth of existing property value to create new revenue for us. While we're, while we have a lot of new growth happening in Dennison, it's still existing property values that are going up that generates that new revenue. And so that number for next year, we're projecting to be 62%. Basically, you're taking the biggest chunk of our biggest revenue source and saying it can only grow at a certain amount. And so that's why we really want to get that rate up to the rollback rate. So in future years, when that cap's in place, we have revenue available to provide the services we need for the community. We think existing values are going to continue to grow, and I'll show a slide here in a minute. You'll recall from the budget workshop that we still have a pretty low property value per capita when you look at other cities of similar sizes around us. $54,000 per capita in property value. That's relatively low, and property tax revenue per capita is pretty low as well. So we think that there's plenty of room for Dennison to grow from a value standpoint and want to be able to capture that in the future so we can continue to improve the community as we are this next fiscal year. as we are this next fiscal year. The new property value, so 38% of our revenue this year is coming from new value, that's going to be very cyclical. In fact, that 38%, that's a very high number for us. Over the past few years, as we've seen new growth come in, we've not seen that number quite so high. So we hope that continues, but we know that sometimes the economy turns down, buildings slows down, and that number's going to wax and wane like the economy does. So we're going to continue to position ourselves for growth, but we know that that growth's not always going to be there. It's cyclical. We need to rely on our existing property values and growing those and trying to invest in existing property. The other thing that we have working against us is that we have a low amount of general fund debt. So in calculating your rollback rate, they don't calculate it, they don't factor in your interest and sinking fund portion of your property tax rate. So when you have very little debt, like we do, that means, again, that we're not exempting ourselves from that cap. So a few things I want to revisit here. Again, this is a table showing Dennison in the context of 10 other cities around us or around the metroplex that are, some are bigger, some are smaller, but kind of ones that we benchmark ourselves against. We have low property tax value per capita, and so we think that as we invest in the community, we revitalize neighborhoods and help to bring those values up. We've got a lot of room to grow when it comes from existing property growth. Same on the revenue side. Property tax revenue per capita is about $353. There's plenty of room to grow. If you look at just our 10 peer cities, we are way below average, average being $463 per capita. So some room to grow from a revenue standpoint as well. I mentioned our INS rate, the interest and sinking fund rate. We, of our total tax rate, INS only makes up 18%. Out of all the peer cities, we're the lowest there. It's good to be, you know, not have a lot of debt, and this will be changing over the next few years as we do some major street projects. But it does work against us in the context of the legislation that was passed. The question may be asked, what's the City of Dennison doing and what are the other cities doing with their tax rate? What you're seeing as a result of Senate Bill 2 is that most cities are going up to their rollback rate or above, in one case with Melissa. If you look at the very bottom right-hand corner, that column for each community calculates the proposed rate as a percent of the rollback rate, and the average is 99.4. So on average, most folks or most communities are going up to their rollback rate in order to capture future revenue and lessen the impacts of the legislation that was passed. So you can see the difference, the current rate versus proposed rate, 2.9% increase there. The average is 1.3, and you can see what the other cities are doing there. Still some data missing as cities are still going through their budget process, so we'll continue to update this as that moves ahead. Looking more locally here within the county, because our residents pay really four entities on their tax bill. So those four entities are the City of Dennison, Grayson County, Grayson College, and Dennison Independent School District. The current and proposed rates are shown here, and what our taxpayers are going to see overall is a decrease in their overall tax rate of just over 11 cents. So on different home values, the $129,000 home value that's shown here is the average homestead value in our city. So if it's a home that's owner-occupied and they have a homestead exemption, that's the average home value that you see in Dennison. So for an average home value, you're going to see a decrease of $147.61 on your bill next year, assuming that value doesn't change. And that, you know, that may change, but this is just for comparison's sake to see what that looks like. So the question is, reference that the extra $275,000 that will be generated from going up to the rollback rate. So I want to tie that into our street improvement program. Y'all hear it. I hear it every day. Dennison needs to do a better job keeping up its streets. While we have allocated over the last two years now $670,000 towards street improvements and sidewalk improvements, we always need more. We have a lot of deferred maintenance on our streets, and we think that's the best place to put this $275,000. So just kind of breaking down that $670,000 allocation, since we are taking on some larger projects in the next couple of years, and I'll touch on those projects in a little bit, we're going to use some of that allocation to help fund the debt service that's needed for those larger projects. But we also want to continue to make annual street improvements in terms of overlay and micro pave work, and then also work on our sidewalks as well. And so this shows how that $670,000 is going to be redone. The street reconstruction projects, which will be done for the next five years, $22.4 million in street reconstruction projects. The five streets involved are listed here, Flora, Loy Lake, Crawford, Waterloo Lake, and Edwards. Those are going to be some very big projects, very noticeable and very needed improvements on those key streets. So again, our recommendation would be to add that $275,000 back into our annual improvement program. So not only will we be doing those large reconstruction projects, but annually we'll be doing the overlay work and the micro pave work that we've started over the last couple of years. There we go. So I mentioned the five projects coming up. This is just kind of a detail of the costs associated with those projects and the timing of them. Flora, Loy Lake, and Waterloo Lake Drive are going to be the first phase of projects, starting construction and design in 2020, and then the other two streets, Crawford and Edwards, would be followed up in 2021, starting design and then construction in 2022. Final thing we wanted to touch on is just the status of the General Fund and Utility Fund. Update you all, assuming the budget as it is now, we're looking to, we're projecting a finishing fund balance in, at the end of fiscal 2019 or October 1st, of just over $5 million or 69 days' worth of reserve. As you know, our target is 60 to 90 days, so we're still within that. At the end of 2020, as it's proposed, we've got 65 days of balance, so we're still in a healthy shape and are able to fund the programs that are existing and then also add to our street improvement program as well. Utility Fund as well, shown here, again, working within our 60 to 90 days there and funding the needed capital improvements in the Utility Fund as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did kind of the next steps for the budget tonight. You'll need to adopt a resolution that will set public hearings for the budget. Those are proposed for August 19th and September 3rd, and then September 16th is our deadline to adopt the budget and the tax rate. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from council? Direction? Okay, well, this was an information-only item. No action needed. Thank you, Mr. Rex.
Thank you.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution calling two public hearings to consider an increase in tax revenue. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you stated, we are here to take action on a resolution calling two public hearings. The Truth in Taxation rules mandate a governmental unit publish a proposed tax rate and also hold two public hearings on a tax revenue increase. If the proposed rate exceeds the rollback rate or the effective rate, whichever is lower, the taxing unit's governing body must vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate on a future meeting agenda as an action item. There must be a recorded vote, and the dates of the public hearings must be stated and notices must be published. The proposed tax rate for tax year 2019 is .652034. This exceeds the lower of the effective rate, therefore requiring action. Notice will be posted, and public hearings will be held on both August 19th, 2019, and September 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers at the regular council meeting. Adoption of the tax rate will take place September 16th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers during a regular council meeting. Staff recommends approving this resolution and calling for public hearings to increase tax revenue, and as a reminder, this is a roll call vote.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? So, Chris, we need a motion, but a voice vote.
Need a motion, a second, and a vote.
Okay, all right. There are no questions for Ms. Wagner. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution calling for public hearings for an increase in tax revenue.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hender. Chris?
Okay, there we go. Does that call your name? Please state yes or no. Hander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Greenleaf?
Yes.
Gott?
Yes.
Well, note, J.C. Doty is absent. Crowley?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and receive an update from the city manager on annexation planning efforts. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Excited to update you on our progress with annexation planning efforts. Just put our vision up here because it's always good to keep the end in mind when we work through this. Our vision to become a community of choice by creating an excellent quality of life. Lots of aspects to this, but really what we're trying to do on the annexation front ties back to this. So a question comes up quite frequently, why plan for annexation and growth? And I guess the two biggest points I'd make here is that you don't become a community of choice by accident, really. That's a very purposeful and deliberate effort on behalf of the community to help guide and facilitate future growth of the city, and that's what we're really talking about. And the second point is that our ability to provide services in the future are directly tied back to the land that's within our city limits. And so as we think about the character of the community, its appearance, and the standard of living and quality of life we're trying to build, all that really ties back to what the land is used for in the city, its density, zoning, all those different factors. So just wanted to kind of share that foundational information for you. Back to our comprehensive plan, which was approved in December of 2018 last year. One of the kind of 10 big ideas that the plan pitched out there as our to-do list, as it were, for growth and development, was to develop and implement strategic annexation policies and plans to ensure desirable development, create utility master plans to guide growth and adopt policies that clearly define developer and city responsibilities. So soon as the comprehensive plan was finished, we kind of ran with this implementation strategy and early in 2019, started to identify some key growth areas that we wanted to explore in the city. Our Public Works team has been hard at work finishing up our water and wastewater master plans. And then again, we've just started digging into how can we plan and strategize to grow the city in a responsible way that's going to help provide for our financial future? While this effort was underway, as the council knows, the legislature passed House Bill 347, which restricted the ability of some cities, tier-one cities, which we are, to annex land within our ETJ. And for those that don't know, ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, is basically the future growth area of the city. But what House Bill 347 did is essentially take away the city's ability to do that. We were able to pass a resolution prior to the effective date of that House bill to retain that ability to annex in the future and kind of control our growth and control our ability to provide for the future of the community. So that Resolution 3977 laid out a future annexation area. We identified areas primarily west of Dennison, west of 75, that are kind of our key growth areas. And again, we're not, we don't intend to annex all of this area. This simply preserved our ability to annex in the future to help grow the city. And that's what the resolution did. The resolution also directed staff to generate and come up with service plans for this annexation area. So we've been working closely with the city attorney and our staff, our planning and zoning staff, to create those plans. We have a template now that we are using to help guide the service planning portion of this, and that effort is ongoing. Wanted to kind of lay out what the timeline looks like moving forward, both for the council and the public, so that we can get information out there. Really, where we're at now is we're doing a lot of background and research information about these future growth areas. So looking at our utility master plans, looking at really all the parcel-level data. There's a lot of parcels out west of Dennison and working on the service plan for that Resolution 3977 area. So that's really going to take us a couple of months to finalize that research and pull all that information together. And then really, steps two and three, public engagement and city council discussion and resolution, are going to happen at the same time. So we think probably around October, November, we're going to have enough research done that we want to go to the public, engage them, and explain what we're going to do in terms of the process and what it looks like moving forward, and at the same time, work with the city council to lay out what that process is going to look like. As we work through those discussions with the public and the city council, eventually there is a formal process that will follow for any annexations that we decide to move forward with, public notifications and hearings and different things, and potential for agreements to be explored for annexation and development. And then eventually, those will be adopted and implemented. So we think this is really going to take us about six months to work through with kind of concluding in spring of next year. So again, not having all the information at this point, did want to at least share what the timeline is. A lot of folks in the community that may not be in city limits but own property, perhaps in the ETJ, are wondering what's going on, what's the city going to do. We're working through that background information, and as soon as we have direction that we want to go in, obviously, we want to engage the public and share in that opportunity. With that, that's, again, no action requested on this item. Informational only, and just want to keep council and the public in the know on our growth and annexation planning.
Questions for Mr. Rex? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution to approve the expenditure of funds for the Clara Blackford Smith and W. Aubrey Smith Charitable Foundation and related litigation. This item will be acted upon immediately after executive session. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during the meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with attorney and discuss claims related to bank trustee of Smith Foundation and pending litigation against bank trustee. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to Section 551.086. Discuss and consider a Chapter 380 economic agreement with Outdoor Power Sports. The time is 6:49, and the council is now in executive session. The time is 7:15, and the council will reconvene in regular session. We will return to Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution to approve the expenditure of funds for the Clara Blackford Smith- for the Clara Blackford Smith and W. Aubrey Smith Charitable Foundation and related litigation. Mr. Rex?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The proposed resolution before you tonight will go to support and declare as a public purpose the support of the lawsuit that's been filed on behalf of the community against the Bank of America and the trustee of the Smith Foundation funds. Anybody who's been in Dennison for any amount of time has heard of the Smith Foundation and familiar with the family that left significant dollars to help the community out. The, the will and, and foundation information bylaws that really direct that, direct how that money will be spent has been under assault really for the last few years since the Bank of America left Dennison, Texas. And just to give you an idea for the scale of, of money that's been pumped into the community from the Smith Foundation, it's around $27 million since the mid-1980s, going toward organizations such as the, the County Shelter, Dennison Education Foundation, Child and Family Guidance Center, Boys and Girls Clubs, DISD, Dennison Performing Arts, and the, the list really goes on and on and on. The, the Smith Foundation has really helped to build the Dennison community. And, and the, the purpose of the city being involved is to help bring those dollars back into the community, to help fund the things that need to be funded to, to keep Dennison a great community. So the resolution really outlines as a, as a public purpose and public support of returning control, sorry, returning local control of the Smith Foundation back to the Dennison community, which has, has left really for the last three years. The bank has basically taken over the foundation and reduced the amount of money that comes back to the Dennison community. And this, this resolution is in support of that effort. So with that, staff recommends approval of the resolution and happy to answer any questions you have on this resolution.
Questions for Mr. Rex? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution to approve expenditures of fund and support returning local control of and accountability for expenditures from the Clara Blackford Smith and W. Aubrey Smith Charitable Foundation.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. I would just like to say, I would venture to say that there is not a citizen in Dennison that hasn't been directly or indirectly impacted by the Smith, the generosity of the Smith Foundation. It is right and appropriate that the city joins in this effort to return local input, oversight, and control of the funding of the Smith Foundation to Dennison and to Grayson County, as was clearly the intent of Clara Blackford and W. Aubrey Smith when the trust was established. The attempt to circumvent their intent is wrong, and the city council supports this remedy designed to stop the actions of U.S. Trust, which have had such a negative impact on our community over the last three years. The unanimous support from this council demonstrates our commitment to support a legal action to again honor the intent of Clara Blackford and W. Aubrey Smith that their funds would be used to better the lives of the citizens of Dennison and Grayson County. Discuss and consider a Chapter 380 economic development agreement with Outdoor Power Sports.
Mayor, I move to approve the Chapter 380 economic development agreement with Outdoor Power Sports and authorize the city manager to execute the same, subject to final legal review and approval.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. There being no further business to come before this body. The time is 7:20, and we are adjourned.